United States of America and to your public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Lego, could you take a roll call, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Mrs. Issing. Dr. Klein.
President.
Mr. Kachasik.
Here.
Dr. Koschow.
Here.
Mr. Leonard. Mr. Matarazo.
Here.
Mr. Nemec.
Here.
Mr. Trucey.
Here.
Mr. Stovar.
Here.
You have a form, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lego.
You're welcome.
Oh, you can't be special reports. Okay. Special reports, Mr. Leonard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will start off with the CWCTC Fair Tech meeting held in May first, 2025. At each time we had executive session from six to approximately seven, served, uh, uh, which were serving delicious meal. I can't see what's good. Halftime cheeseburgers, macaroni salad, homemade potato chips, iced tea and lemonade, and dessert cupcakes, vanilla with chocolate icing and chocolate with vanilla icing, both with sprinkles, plus very tasty baked cookies with a huge smile on each one. And they were all made by the kids.
Here at school, too, by the staff.
No import. We discussed personnel and legal matters at the executive session, nothing of which I could talk a lot about. Regular meeting called to, to order approximately seven. The regular meeting, the board reviewed and or approved some of the following items, some potential program changes with, which includes deposital program eliminations and changes. We approved a minute from the April third meeting. The executive director presented his monthly report. A new treasurer was approved with the 2025-26 school terms, board treasurer. Financial reports and treasurer's reports were approved. The agreement with WIU purchasing consortium for the purchase of paper products was approved under contract and services of busing contracts approved with Quest Transit for the 25-26 school year, which is all subject to final review and approval by the solicitor. We approved five conferences to be attended by various administrative and other staff members. Two new employees were hired, a workforce education form coordinator and a first aid, first aid nurse substitute. And one FMLA lead was approved. This includes, concludes that report. Westmoreland Intermediary Unit for the month of April, intermedia, there's a little beehive of activity out there, so I'll, I was up there quite a few times. As the board president, had a very busy month as part of the, as part of the executive cabinet team, I am involved in reviewing all contracts and agreements, reviews, negotiations. This month we worked on reviewing the financial directors agreement, which we did finally get an approval for. Reviewing resource directors under review, put on slight hold to the directors currently on the meeting. The team is currently working with the negotiator, the pair of professional groups. At the regular meeting held on April 22nd, the board conducted the following business, executive session from approximately six to seven. We discussed personnel, legal, and student matters. The regular meeting started at approximately seven. Standard business was conducted such as hiring of personnel, approving of resignation leave and termings, as well as add some new hires. The board also reviewed and discussed procedures for handling of policies. And we did actually, were able to approve a, um, not, not a policy, but a, a paper that outlines how we're going to handle that. That was a grueling process, unfortunately. And on a sad note, fellow board member, Mr. Joseph Fella, the Leganer School Board Representative, passed away on April 29th and will be sadly missed by all. Now, this concludes my report. The board agenda in eight, in minutes with further detail, very great detail, is available every month on the WIU website. And I believe it's something that's going somewhere out, too. It's usually very concise, but it hits, mostly. I can never get everything in these notes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Um, do we, this afternoon, we held an executive session prior to the board meeting where we discussed personnel, confidential student matters, legal matters, and collective bargaining. Now we return to Dr. Harris.
Sure. Um, I wanted to start off by saying tonight it was, um, great to, after work and before the board meeting, I got to see the Unified Track Team compete. And remember, um, last year we started the Unified Bocce Club, and this year it was our first year of doing the Unified Track Team. They had teammate, um, teams from Mount Pleasant, Belle Vernon, Henfield, and Penn Trafford compete in the track and field events, um, the track relays, javelin, shot put, and long jump. So it was kind of, it was great to watch all the kids, and a lot of the visitors showed up to support the kids as well. And then I went to the softball, and as we know, they are already won the section. So the phase game might not have mattered win or lose, but I had to leave because the lightning went off about 4:30. So we had to clear the field, but at that time, our batter was off, the bases were loaded. So we was, I was wondering what she was going to do, so I'll fill you in next week, because if I waited, you had to wait 30 minutes, and by the time 30 minutes would have been, I would have had to come in here anyhow, so I came inside. So kind of anxious to see, but.
They won 3-2.
They won 3-2. I wonder if she got. Baseball?
Well, baseball won two.
Perfect. And I know baseball might not have won the section, but I know they made the playoffs. So tomorrow night, if you wanted a chance to see the volleyball game, and Wednesday we have lacrosse, as well as our scholarship night, with a lot of students getting scholarships. And I can't, so busy week. The last three weeks of school, I have to tell you, sometimes I always enjoy that first couple, the first month of September, always right before Christmas, and I love that last month of school. It is just such a unique experience that you get to experience every year with the kids, with the seniors, with the community. It's nice.
Dr. Harris, you have any idea how many kids went to the prom?
I actually don't. About 600.
How many? 600? It's fantastic.
600 kids? And remember, not everyone always takes a day, so sometimes kids go single. So it's hard to tell like how many couples there were, or how many kids.
That's why so many peoples.
People, yeah. It's good. So it was a nice turnout. The, also I wanted to say that the quiz bowl, they finished fourth in the state. It was nice to see the very first round of all the students. They finished thirds. They got to go into the nine semifinalists, and then from there, um, not so well in the first game, so they, they got eliminated, but they, um, gave a score of four. So it was a lot of fun to watch, and it was nice, because that was one of my son's only events he's done during high school that I got to see. So it was kind of interesting, so it was, got to compete. And that is all I have before, and unless I have just this one budget report, to pass off to you, that Brett and I are going to do it together. You ready?
Yep, I am ready.
Okay. This actually might be rest last.
This very well could be my last one.
Make it a good one.
Oh, boy. I'm not going out on top, I'll tell you that.
Do you prefer the, does the lights on, I came for everybody?
No, no. So far.
Can they see it on TV? Is it better for TV if it was off?
Mr. Ben, buzz me if you think it's better if it's off.
Yes. You guys are in a peanut gallery over there. Yeah, I get, I'm going to get it like in stereo. Yeah. Figured you'd throw tomatoes, for sure. Okay, so, uh, here's our proposed budget for the upcoming school year 25-26. Uh, it's been a challenge this year, probably more so than the last several years. Things keep getting more and more difficult, so, uh, what you're going to see when you go through the numbers is that, of course, salaries and benefits, which is 80% of our budget, continue to increase. You know, our contracts are very generous, our benefits are very generous, and they continue to be the bulk of the increases that we see year over year.
And Brett, before we move on to the next slide, if you don't mind, basic subsidy increase of half percent?
Yes.
What is it, 2%?
Well, in our case, it's usually between 2 and 3%. Now, keep in mind, we always get one of the lowest increases in the state. This is the lowest I can remember, quite honestly, since freeze back when Tom Ridge was governor. I don't think I, we've ever seen anything close to this low. So, uh, again, healthcare has been really high. This is the third consecutive year of, of close to 10%. I think two years, two years ago was 10%, last year 12%, this year 9%. And that's $600,000, or, or, or the equivalent of two mils right there. Uh, we did add a new, uh, central office position to help, uh, you know, support our students, so that increased our costs. As, uh, Mr. Kachasik just said, basic subsidy only up a, a half a percent, which is very difficult to overcome. In our case, one mil brings in $314,000, and if we raise one mil, the cost to the average taxpayer, and when I say the average taxpayer, that's what the average assessed value would be, would be $28 a year. But keep in mind, in light of all of this, we're in the top 4% of student achievement in the state, but in the bottom 4% of spending.
And Brett, that's why I always like to jump in. I'm going to be bringing that up again at a later point in time tonight. PT has always finished in the top 4% of the state. The last 10 years, we performed strong academically, and we always are at one of the lowest costs per pupil spending. I tell you this every year, when we look at all the other schools that are our size, performing, um, right around with us, that they have sometimes 30, 40, 50 million dollars more than us. Do I believe we need that much more? No. But I am finding it very hard to compete with those schools based on the budget we have. So do I believe we need 40 million? No, but I do believe we need more money. We need more funds to compete, because if we don't have those funds, it's going to be very hard for us to maintain that great performance we do with our students. And another thing I wanted you to talk about in this slide, we didn't really mention it, is the last few years, we have been relying on our budget from our fund balance, and that is something that we cannot do, um, any longer. Can you explain why, Brett?
Well, you can see, last year, uh, we had projected a deficit of almost $800,000. So we used, pulled $800,000 worth of fund balance last year. There was nothing to make that up this year, and looking at the current budget, we're at $68 million in revenue, and expenditures are up to $70 million, so that fund balance deficit has gone up from $800,000 to, uh, close to $1.4 million. So even though revenues are up 900,000, expenditures up 1.5, that, that deficit added to the prior deficit of $800,000 is where we're at, 1.4 million. So you just can't keep sustaining that pattern of having the expenditures exceed the revenues, eating into the fund balance, because eventually there won't be any fund balance left, and, uh, if that gap continues to spread between the revenues and expenditures, you're going to be in a serious, serious financial situation.
What, what is our fund balance at the end of this year going to be?
It should be approximately $4 million.
And what was it maybe three to four years ago?
Well, during the COVID period, we were somewhere $8 million. So we've been, now granted, we used a portion of that to buy the administration building because the fund balance was healthy, uh, but now it's been decreasing for the last several years.
So Brett, what percent of our budget is the fund balance?
5.7.
5.7, and what does the state recommend?
The recommended is between 5 and 8%. Five on the low, eight on the high. But in reality, you know, a lot of districts like to maintain closer to 10%, where they'll, they'll take the excess and they'll put it in a special fund that doesn't count against the fund balance. So most places are probably closer to 10%.
And we were in those kind of numbers at one point.
We were, yeah, we were. A few years back, we were.
But this is what my worry was about balancing a budget with the fund balance.
Right.
You keep doing that, you're not going to be where you're supposed to be, and then you're not going to have the numbers. We can't just keep that, because eventually our fund balance is going to be gone, and that's why this budget and percentering doesn't rely on the fund balance.
And unfortunately, again, when you talk about the, the revenue from the state, you know, if, if they're going to keep giving us 1 or 2%, uh, it just, there's no way for us to bridge that gap between the revenues and expenditures without raising it locally. And, you know, earned income is only going to go up so much every year. You know, investment earnings have been good the last several years, but interest rates are starting to come down, so that number will start to dip a little bit. The real estate transfers had cooled off a little bit, so we didn't get much, as much there. So the only, you know, when you get through everything else, there's one number left to plug, and that's the millage number. And, uh, that's kind of what we need to do.
Excuse me, uh, just per definition, what does a fund balance mean? In case someone doesn't know, what is a fund?
Basically, fund balance is how much money you have in a bank.
Our savings account.
Your saving account, yeah. So we'll go back a couple slides, yeah, right there. So when you look at revenues, there was a, percentage wise, a decent increase in special ed subsidy, but it's not a large number, so dollar wise, it wasn't, uh, that significant, but we're happy to see that at least they put some more money in the special ed subsidy. Earned income continues to increase steadily, not, you know, it's not a huge increase year over year, but it's a nice steady increase. Uh, there was a significant increase in the Ready to Learn Grant that was proposed by the governor. You know, we hope that that number doesn't get changed and, and get decreased, but until the final state budget's passed, we don't ever know. The homestead exemption, uh, actually, it's gone up again this year for the second consecutive year. So as opposed, last year was $200 per household, this year it looks like it's going to be closer to $230 per household. So it doesn't help our bottom line, but it helps our taxpayers' dollar, bottom line.
Quick question, Brett.
Yes, sir.
On the source of it for me, basic subsidy subsidy increased 0.5. It's been a while since I saw a tally sheet of what, what peers are getting. I know we're lower than most. Are we, in this area, are we still as low as we used to be as far as what our, our general area people are getting?
We're the lowest in Westmoreland County, yes.
That's what I always saw, and we're still there. What's the reason for that?
You'd have to talk to the people in Harrisburg.
Where's people listen, I don't know if they're right ones, but that, that's always baffling. Why is it like?
The formula never works in our favor. I, and, you know, they, they tweak it from year to year, but it never gets tweaked in our favor. You know, all of the new money that goes into the basic ed subsidy at the state level is formula driven, and the factors in that formula, we don't qualify for any of them. So all this new money, we don't get any.
Well, I've heard a huge percent goes to Philadelphia, Allegheny, and such. Uh, it eats up a whole big chunk of the board every day.
Well, because they build the factors that favor them. That's probably the best reason why.
That's, no, you're good, just.
So again, 55% of our rev, revenue comes from local sources, 44% from the state, and we get less than 1% from the federal government. So under our expenditures, um, instruction, which is our classroom expenses, is actually pretty, pretty level. Uh, we, you know, we eliminated some positions through attrition, so that helped keep that line in order. Uh, had a couple retirements, so not a big increase, actually a slight decrease in instruction. Uh, and, and we did see a slight decrease in tuition that goes out to other schools and cyber schools, so that also helped keep, bring that number down. Uh, support, big increase there. Part of that has to do with our ongoing negotiation with the SEIU and some changes that may happen to that contract that we're trying to allow for. Uh, we added a new central office position, as I stated earlier, and just overall increases in salaries and benefits across the board. Transportation's increased, that's, that was a significant number in there as well. So those would be the factors that really drove that big increase under our support.
So that's one question, Mr. Lego or Dr. Harris. How much money do we, out of our budget, goes to students that don't attend our school? Meaning they go to cyber schools, technically, whatever. They're non-PT in our brick and mortar. How much money do we spend?
It's about $2 million.
So about $2 million out of our budget goes to non-students at our school? Thank you.
And I just want to point out, when you have the, the summary there, and we've talked about, um, what we have now, what we're going, this already reflects some of our losses we took, and Brett mentioned that through attrition, we had three classroom teachers, and then we also lost money in educational programs. We went through, and we cut a lot of different programs this year as well. And there's also already reflects some cuts we made to security, athletics, some transportation, even though we went higher, but we also cut, cut some back to support staff and building and grounds. So we already did, and that's also reflected in what you see already. And that's important to notice for when we get to the point about what I'm going to be asking you for this year.
Brett, does each cyber school charge the same amount per student?
Each cyber school, each school district pays each cyber school the same rate. So Penn Trafford pays every cyber school the same rate. Penn Hills pays every cyber school a different rate, but they pay them. So it's a really strange formula that it's based on your expenditures. So fortunately, since our expenditures are rather low, the tuition that we give to those schools would be less than a high-cost district like Fox Chapel or Penn Hills. It, it really is senseless, because you would assume that it would take the same amount of money to educate each kid regardless of what school district it came from. And I know there are proposals out there to set a standard rate for cyber students that would be the same for every student across the, the Commonwealth, but because of a lot of political pressure, that movement all seems to get stalled. So hopefully this year, there's some momentum to get it done. Uh, our, they're talking about a number anywhere between maybe $8,500 and $10,000, as opposed to the $14,000 we pay now for a regular ed kid and close to $20,000 for a special ed kid. So charter former school would be a huge benefit to the district.
I saw $8,500 as well.
Yeah.
Just by comparison, you may be kind of answered a question, but I'm slow. The, the, um, it's about, it's about $14,000 for regular ed students repaid for cyber, right? What's our cost per student for in-house work?
Well, that would be what they consider the cost to be.
Is that what it is? Or is that what they?
Well, it, it, there's, there's a lot of different ways to calculate that number, depending what you want to put in there. So yeah, that's probably pretty accurate when you throw everything into the mix, yes.
Well, how do you think they calculate our $70 million budget divided by our population? Based on all of our students, you get what they do?
In a very simplistic form, yes. There are certain things that come out of there, but basically, that's kind of how they do it. They do deduct some things out from your total budget and divide it by your number of students.
I'm trying to look at some common wide statistics right now, have been for a while, and I can't make sense of some scrambled eggs of how they're doing this. And, and I just attribute that I'm not slow, maybe it's the way they dish it out.
No, they, they, some of the formulas are very complicated and hard for anybody to really make sense of, other than the person putting it together.
And I can't press any, and I'm still going to keep pressing, I can't press anybody in a corner to get the right answer. And I'm not saying you need to have, or should have all the right answers. You should have someone who can go and give you the answer. Nobody seems to have those right now.
No, it's easier said than done, for sure. Uh, so just to summarize, you know, 60% of our expenditures go into the classroom, which is where the money should be. You know, support's also very important, so 33% of it goes there. We spend less than 5% on our debt service, which is unheard of throughout the Commonwealth. I mean, our debt load is very, very low, and, um, our extracurriculars and athletics is only 2.75%. So that's just another summary, breaking it down by category. So where are we at with millage? Well, we're currently at 90.75. I think, I'll, I'll let Dr. Harris speak to what, what he thinks we should do, but ultimately, it's up to you all.
Absolutely, and I, I told you already, when we do the, we're the top 4% of the state for academics, we're the bottom 4% for cost per pupil. When you do this, when the Pittsburgh Business Times, I showed you where we were last year, it didn't come out this year, it should come out soon, it ranks everybody by spending and performance. All the schools were right next to millions of dollars or more. I already said, we might not need $20 million more, we might not need 30. We do need more money, though, because we can't just keep going at the rate we're doing. We can't take from our fund balance. We've already made cuts to classroom teachers, to safety of left athletics, building and grounds, support staff, educational programs, transportation. We already did that. If we do not raise more mils, we have a list of items that are going, and I had to rank items that are, what are going next. We, we could potentially lose our tutors, our classroom student learning assistants, our school psychologist to not replace, a job coach, the family services of Westmoreland County, a technology support person, some other academic programs, and some other administration programs. We cannot, we're at the point now where there are no low-hanging fruit. We cut everything we could cut. You have to look at the fact that we are the high-performing, low-cost spending. So I'm not coming to you from a district that is already spending high cost. I'm coming to you for someone who can't rely on the fund balance anymore, because that's budgetary incorrect. I'm coming to you, I have never asked for more, a large mil increase prior. I've been here 17 years, 12 as the superintendent doing this budget. This is the first time I'm going to put a high number out there. If you do not raise at least four mils, I think we are not only going to lose a lot of our items this year, we are going to have trouble going forward and doing everything we do to achieve our top 10 status. This is actually, I'm appealing to you as someone in charge of the students and the children and the academics of this district. And I realize I represent a small part of the whole community, because it might only be 20% with parents and kids in the school, but those are the 20% that matter to me each and every day. And that's why I fight, I get up, I have a strong admin team, that's the team, everyone. This is what we do everything for, and I would not forgive myself if I didn't ask for a large increase for the first time ever in my career as superintendent. So thank you for that consideration.
Dr. Harris, there's cuts, you said, put a number to them. You have an estimate on that, and what, what did you guys say for even before this deficit?
Even before this deficit, we already had across.
Give me a number.
800,000. So we already took that out, so we did take this seriously, because I want to present you a number of what we actually need. I'm not giving you what a wish list is, I'm giving you what is needed. I know there are wants, I know there are needs. What I'm asking you for is what I need. Any other questions? And on that note, we end our.
I do have a question for Brett. Brett, if, if the tax increase is voted in, when does it actually hit the taxpayers' financial, you know?
The, the tax bills go out August 1st.
This, right, this fall.
Yeah, the fall.
And Matt, I, I, I'm not a statistician, you know, I want to share the impact per mil of a tax increase for the district. That's something that'd be interesting for people to know, so, you know, the decision is, is a weight of something.
Say it one more time, Mr. Leonard.
The number.
How much does it cost per person?
No, no, the value of the mil, that doesn't matter to anybody. What might they expect to see if we?
If your, if your house is at the average assessed value, which in the township is $28,000, so half of the people are above that, half the people below that. If you're $28,000, one mil is $28 a year.
A year, make sure it's a year, not a month.
A year.
Yeah, so one mil, one, 28, two mils, twice that. In other words, for anybody who's listening, I personally, I'll speak for myself, I'll pay some extra money to keep things from getting way worse, but, um, I just, I don't know how many people are going to like.
Brett, what portion of the fall tax bill actually goes to the school district?
That, the fall bill is strictly the school district.
And the spring all goes to who?
The county and the township.
County and township.
Right.
Obviously, not everybody's house is the average $28,000. If somebody wanted to calculate what their increase would be, if they have their tax, uh, missing, then it shows their value, what, how would they calculate that?
Well, they would take their assessed value, whatever that is from their tax bill, and again, they would multiply it by, by 0.01% for, that's each mil, 0.01. So I think that's 0.01 in my head.
So it's 0.01 per mil?
Right.
He's asking a question better than I did. That's what I wanted to try to get hold of.
Let me think about that. 0.001, I'm sorry, be 0.001, I think, I need to do my math now. What, 001? Yeah, whatever comes up at $28. I don't have my calculator in my head.
That's a big difference.
2,800 times 0.1 would be 2,000, it's 001.
Point zero.
Point 001.
That's per month.
No, that's a per year.
So you take your assessed value times 0.001. So you take your assessed value times point zero zero one.
But it's per mill.
Or zero zero two, or zero zero three, whatever the increase would be.
When you get that tone.
You're saying one mill is point zero zero one?
Correct. Any other questions?
Remember, last year, we only raised one mill, and the year before that, we raised zero. So that also kind of comes into factor where we're here tonight, thinking what else besides the fund balance and the other issues too. One mill last year, zero mill the year before.
So just, just on an ending note, you know, this is going to be my last budget, and, you know, I am a taxpayer here, and, you know, everything should tell me that I want to say you shouldn't raise millage at all. But, you know, for the health of this district going forward, I really think we need to start addressing that fund balance, fund balance usage, and put some sort of increase in for this year so that, you know, the district is in a better position going forward. So, that's it. So, good luck with your decision.
Thanks for leaving us this message, Brett.
Hey, Phil, when I got here, there was zero fund balance. So I, I think I'm leaving it a little bit better than I found it.
And that is all I have, Mr. Nemec. And there's no visitors sign up to speak.
All right, so we will skip by that.
Yeah, that's what we're going to discuss, you want me to go over that? All right, next meeting, we're going to ask you, under athletics and extracurricular, there are no items as of now. Budget and finance, we're going to actually, I can turn it back over to you for.
Mr. Stovall, budget and finance.
I need to fill it in, don't I?
Put any number you want.
Put in whatever you want. Yeah, pull the key on you from the last.
Last year, we had more than one motion.
He just happens to be the guy that motions, it could be anybody.
Anyone can make the motion.
Because you won't like what I put in there. So I can start, I want two point five, I want two point five. For a total of ninety, two point seven five, and I don't know, Brett usually gives us the.
Yeah, I have to calculate, I have to run it through a formula, so I'll do that as soon as, whatever the final number is.
So do you need a second on that at this point?
Well, I'd like to offer an alternative.
Two point five.
Can you hear me, Nick?
Yeah, okay.
Can you hear me now?
No, I can hear you.
Keep in mind, this is preliminary.
Exactly, I'd like to offer, my thought is three and a half mills, and let me break that down for you. I know that we're, Brett can confirm this. I think some of our budget line items were over-expending in, which is causing the problem to get worse. So I'm suggesting one mill towards technology, one mill towards security, and one and a half mills toward our, our capital fund. That's where I'm coming with the three and a half.
I second that.
With one point five, you said towards.
One mill toward tech, one mill toward security, one and a half toward the capital fund. I mean, we're still in the process of discussing, doing something. And I think we're getting toward the end of our current loan debt, so.
So are you basically saying two mills toward the budget? Is that, I'm not following.
Yeah, how much is the budget?
Two mills to the budget and one point five will go to assign fund balance.
Okay, I, I.
He's still got to take for the fund balance.
I have, I have to ask the solicitor a question, though. So Mr. Stovall made a motion for two point five mills.
With no second.
I seconded it.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, but Phil jumped in on it.
Yeah, I did it before, so he had something else to think about.
Could you have discussion now on this?
So now they have to vote then?
Yeah, we, what do we have to vote on the first motion first?
That's my question.
I seconded it, but Phil jumped in on me.
Now you have to vote on the two point five.
I didn't hear the second.
If you want more conversations, couldn't they vote no and then have?
Yeah, yeah.
But the point is, there's a motion and a second, so we need a, we need a motion.
I think, two and a half, right?
Marty said two and a half, and I seconded it.
So I'm going to read this, then we'll vote on it. You don't like it, you say no. Move to tentatively adopt the preliminary budget for the Penn Trafford School District for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year in the total amount of seventy million, sixty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars for advertisement and publication in accordance with district policy and the school laws of Pennsylvania. The preliminary budget calls for a two point five mill increase in real estate taxes for a total of, what would that be?
Ninety-three point two five.
Ninety-three point two five mills, and the rate for alligator cow will be calculated if this is approved.
Do I have a second?
Second. I have a question, I do have a question. So Mr. Stovall, that's going to make us short, no, six hundred, five hundred thousand dollars. What, what are you going to cut to balance the budget?
You'll cut some tutors?
I'm just asking.
You'll cut some tutors, as I explained to us. If the SCIU contract goes through, there's money there for medical that I don't believe everybody will take. It's estimated high right now. Budget's low right now for the state, so I think there's going to be more money from that. So I think you can make it up.
And if we don't, and we sign end on a two and a half percent, then you're going to be taking money out of the fund balance again. And that's a direct, against the recommendation of the business manager. So I'm just letting you know, you had a question, I didn't do the vote. It was my question.
We have a motion on the floor, can I have a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no?
No.
Need a roll call.
Brett will do the roll call.
Mrs. Essing.
Yes.
Dr. Klein.
No.
Mr. Kachasik.
No.
Dr. Koschow.
Yes.
Mr. Leonard.
No.
Mr. Materazzo.
No.
Mr. Nemec.
Yes.
Mr. Petrucci.
No.
Mr. Stovall.
Yes.
You have five noes and four yeses the motion does not carry.
All right, I'd like to make my motion again, and let me clarify, on the one and a half mills, that's maintenance of the buildings and/or capital, I mean, can be used for either or, as far as I'm concerned. So three and a half mills, one mill toward technology, which we're underfunding, one mill for security, which we're underfunding, and one and a half mills toward the buildings, which we need to address.
Could we specify?
And you say, how does that solve the problem, Brett?
It, I was just going to ask the question, it doesn't. Because if you're, if you're dedicating additional millage to those, then we're raising the total bottom line. So it really, it doesn't solve what you're trying to solve, Mr. Kachasik.
Well, if you put, if you put one mill toward technology and you're underspending, that money that's left over is going to go back into the general fund. It's the same thing with the security. If we're not spending, you have a line, line item budget, and if you're not spending up to that budget and you have a surplus in that budget, it's going to go into your general fund. Just like your checkbook would be at home.
Or it can be moved around to.
Yeah, I was saying, I think if you say it can be moved around.
So it's not like, you know, it's not like, you know, you guys say it can't be used for general fund, yes, that's what.
I'm fine, I'm fine with what you're saying, and I understand the tech and security, but it's the one point five for capital. It's, it's, would not, that would not, that would not go in the general fund.
That's why I clarified it, it could be building maintenance. I mean, we put roofs on every single year that we don't have money for. I mean, how are we going to do this? We can't take money out of the, the fund balance anymore, we've got to make a responsible decision.
Well, we currently have two mills that goes into capital fund.
I know.
It gets siphoned off every year on this and that, but.
I'm just, hey, you can vote no on it too, I'm just offering an alternative.
Well, you have to stipulate where you're putting it, though, Phil.
Yeah, so I think keeps me.
I have a comment.
If you don't, then those, then you're going to be underfunding those line items forever. I guarantee you, if you looked at those now, we're under, we're spending more than we're actually bringing in for those lines. You're spending more on the technology and security than the mills we put in place are covering, which is adding to the problem of your shortfall.
Question and comment again. I, I don't have necessarily a problem with the number, but I do have a problem with earmarking and not letting, I don't know how to run school districts. I won't kid you, I, I fix a faucet, I do a long building, I don't know how to run school districts. But I think that if we're earmarking these, Mr. Kachasik, we're telling them only that this is all you can spend money for, and that doesn't allow them to spend the money the way they best do it. I don't know.
I tried to explain it to you.
Yeah, but it's still, I, I, I'm not dumb, I understood your explanation, but I don't necessarily.
I know, you can't put Brett on the spot now, but I guarantee you, he would come up with a number that would surprise you on the shortfall on those two line items. So where are you getting that money from right now?
Well, we, we move it from other parts of the budget, or we take it from the fund balance. But I guess, again, where I'm stuck, and maybe I'm, I'm missing the, an easy explanation here. If, just say for an example, okay, you, you want to dedicate one mill toward security. So we're at, we're at a seventy million dollar budget right now. If we're, if we're dedicating one mill to security, we're going to be at seventy million, three hundred thousand dollars. So how has that helped us shrink the gap on the fund balance? If that's truly the intention. I mean, I get it if you want that millage just to go toward.
All right, let's save our example right now. The millage that we raised for the technology was many, many years ago now. It was two hundred fifty thousand when we raised it.
Yep.
What are you spending now, five hundred, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars on that? I know it isn't two fifty.
Yeah, more than that, no, it's.
So where does that difference come from? It's coming from.
Well, but, but.
You know, so if you were, if you raised that mill to five hundred thousand, or made that line item budget five hundred thousand, and you were spending four hundred thousand, you're going to have a surplus of a hundred thousand, which goes into your general fund.
But I think, Phil, if you, if you want to stop that growth, if you put this out there, you have to put all that money to what we're sucking out of the fund balance every single year to stop that from going out.
Yeah, but part of that sucking out of the fund balance is you're underfunding certain areas.
No, we, I, I thought, if you look back at the budgets, and Brett could clarify.
You can move money around within the accounts.
We said these specific things are coming out of the fund balance.
I think what he's saying is if you designate it in security, it has to stay within security.
No, I'm just saying, you got, you got to replace whatever.
Surplus is in there, that, that, all that money goes back into the general balance.
But to your example about technology, you're absolutely correct that years ago, we're probably going back almost twenty years. We put two hundred fifty thousand dollars, that was the line item for technology, was two hundred fifty thousand dollars. That mill was put on, that expenditure was put on. What's in the budget now, though, is not two hundred fifty thousand dollars. What's in the budget now is eight hundred thousand dollars. And some years we go over, some years we don't. But the fact that we designated two hundred fifty thousand dollars back then, we didn't stay at that number from the expenditure point of view. We tried to keep up as, as technology grew. Now textbooks, that's a different story. We put a mill on for textbooks all those years ago, and never changed it once. Line item hasn't changed in twenty-some years. But in the case of technology and security, the same way, we've, we've increased the expenditure in the budget to try to keep in line with what we're actually spending. Now, do we always hit it perfectly? No, but we're, we're, you know, we're way past what the dedicated mills were when we originally set those line items up, because we've kept up with the expanded programs.
Mr. Lawrie, question. Refresh my feeble memory. We have dipped in the fund balance, let's say the last four times. What, do you remember without thinking, what were those four items? What, what do we take out of the fund balance for the last four times? I think I remember a couple. Roof?
We did a roof, correct. We bought the admin building. Out of fund, out of fund balance.
Did we use it to balance the budget?
And we've used it to balance the budget. Last year, we used it to balance the budget, yes.
The year prior, too?
The year prior, we used it to balance the budget, yes.
And that's what I want to avoid, because if you keep doing that, you're not going to have your fund balance for when we have the roof, for when you have the emergency things.
Okay, Brett, in the past five years, approximately, how often have you gone into the fund balance? Can you recall? Past five-year period?
Almost every year.
So almost every year, we're on the fund balance?
I can't remember which year we didn't, but I don't know.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. We just can't keep going to fund balance.
You can go to the fund balance for reoccurring expenses, or you can go to the fund balance for projects. So specify, if you're saying five years, three of those years were a roof, something, and that's what you use it for. So it's probably two years that we've actually dipped in and used it to balance a budget. Split those out. He's gone five times, but he's used it for what it's intended to, three of those years.
That's, that's, that's a fair assessment, I think, yeah.
Yeah, but health care alone.
So we got, we got to make up the last two years that's a recurring expense every single year to stop the bleeding. That would be the intent.
Okay, Brett, health care alone go up nine percent this year, is that correct?
Yes.
That's nine percent.
Six hundred thousand or almost two mills.
It was projected to go up fifteen at one, one time.
Yeah, but this is nine percent, one-year balance, that's big.
What's been that?
It was twelve percent the year before and ten percent the year before.
That's what I'm saying, it's just, that, that keeps on, you've got to go to the fund balance and make that up. The fund balance just keeps on deleting, it's, okay.
So the percentage, again, for the public, our fund balance recommendation by those of much wiser than myself, is to keep it around six percent, is that a good round number?
Six percent, between four and eight.
Between five and eight, right.
And what percentage do we have now?
At the end of this year, we're going to be at somewhere around six percent.
And as I observe, and money coming out of the fund balance for right or wrong reasons, there's still a minimum you like to keep. And I agree with what Marty said, he wasn't wrong. But now we're at the point where I don't feel comfortable keeping, digging into the fund balance. I hate raising taxes. There comes a time when you do things you don't like. So I agree with most of your views.
All right, let me, since there was not a second on my motion, I'm going to rescind that motion and open it up for another board member to make another suggestion. I'm going to move, being that we're in the bottom four percent in cost per student, we have been very, very frugal, and we've had a great return on what we've done. So commending this board for keeping, Dr. Harris, and, you know, and Mr. Lego, we've done a great job of keeping the budget down, and we have to pay for that. Two years ago, Dr., last year, Dr. Harris asked for what, four mills?
I did, I asked for three.
He asked for three, and we gave him one. So we're short, we've got to make up for that. We've had a teacher contract, we've had other contracts, we've had stuff going up. And reality is, we have to make that up. And I'm going to suggest, the number Phil gave, I appreciate, three point five, but without earmarks. So I'm going to move that we have a three point five percent millage increase with no earmarks, and trusting our people at the top to make the decisions with board. We look at these things they're spending money on, we can't be blind. So they're going to let us know the line items, and we can say, hey, that's not right, this is good, this is bad. So I'm going to use the three point five, no earmarks, and trust our people with it. It's not quite what Dr. Harris wants, but I think it's something that'd be reasonable and fair for our community.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second out there?
I have a point of order for discussion. What happened to the motion we didn't vote on?
I rescinded it.
So you rescinded it without a second?
Correct.
Okay, I didn't know if there was a second, that was the question, okay.
Again, we have a second on this motion.
Second. If I understand the motion, three point five, no earmarks, it's to be used with the highest priorities as being by.
Correct.
Do you need three seconds, sir?
Yes.
I second it.
Okay. Question?
Question.
Must have been called for, Mr. Lego, could you pull the board?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Mrs. Essing.
Yeah.
Dr. Klein.
No.
Dr. Koschow.
No.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kachasik, I skipped you. Mr. Leonard.
Yes.
Mr. Materazzo.
Yes.
Mr. Nemec.
No.
Mr. Petrucci.
I'd just like to add, I'm still one, one mill put aside for new buildings, but this is the right time. But we got to start wearing future boards. We have some old buildings that are going to have to be replaced probably within the next ten-year period. And this building right here is due for renovation in another ten-year period because just every twenty years we do it. And the last time we did this was approximately two thousand fifteen. So we've got some big-time expenses coming up, and I will be long gone. But I still think we should bank a millage, but I realize there's nowhere close, I might get additional mill for that. So I will support the three and a half mills.
Mr. Stovall.
No.
You have four yes and five no, motion does not carry.
Yeah, just to throw out there, one was a three point five, needed, needed one more. Yeah, and just to throw out there, one was a three point five, needed, needed one more vote. One was a two point five, and needed more votes. Maybe, I know I can't bring up a motion myself, but maybe someone can bring up the motion for three, and everyone can compromise. I promise that the money will be put to good use, and I said, like I, I asked for three last year, and.
Just, again, I think we get hung up on, this is not a final decision. If Mr. Stovall is correct in assessment, that, that the, the number from the SEIU contract might be lower, and then that would only benefit, and you could reduce the amount come thirty days from now.
Yeah, you're right. Keep in mind that this is not the final number. This is just the preliminary number to get.
So the lower you go with this number, the less wiggle room you're going to have if these numbers don't come in that we're hoping for.
Brett, are you being another question? Now, this is not the final budget?
No, that's right. You're right, preliminary, you're right.
What, when will the final budget be?
The June, the June meeting, the second June meeting.
I might be back, I'm going away, but I might be, I might be absent, and I don't want anybody to say I'm hiding the budget. I am not. Tell me what I think right now.
Do it by phone, Dallas, that's all.
I can't find one when I was on the phone.
Oh, that's some false words, so I could try that. But I may be here, I'm not sure. My family plans are in flux right now, but, so you're looking for another motion?
Brett, somebody said three.
Oh, we don't have a, we don't have a budget.
That was Matt who suggested the three. I didn't, I didn't make, I can't make a motion, but.
I'll second Matt's motion for three.
You have to make that motion, Mr. Renner.
I, I'll make a motion for three. Unless you need me to expand the language on that, I think you know what I mean.
We have a, what you have?
No earmarks.
We have a motion for three mills. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, question being called for.
I have a question. If we, if the three mills passes, what are you cutting?
Probably we have to look at cutting our tutors, and we're going to revisit some of our, maybe some numbers of our student learning assistance. Because we still have to come up with three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in cuts, so.
Well, and, and depending on the outcome of the contract negotiations, that could be a big part of our reduction.
True. But I do, like I said, I looked at all the budget, and I had to rank everything, and I kind of thought what would be next and what would come, and that might, that, that's a big part of it.
Would you be able to pick and choose them through your different lists there? Is there any?
No, I pretty much, when we looked at the admin team and what we needed, and I even consulted different things, what was, and I had to prioritize everything, because when you do it, pretty much that, it was pretty much, if we had to rank everything from must-keep down, and it's just unfortunate as it is, everything had to be assigned to rank, and if you have to give up something, it would have to be tutors and possibly two SLAs.
Mr. Lego, could you, was there a second?
Was it three?
It was.
But the three would prevent me from going down, cutting more SLAs, which I would appreciate.
All right, Mrs. Essing?
No.
Dr. Klein?
Question. What's the motion here?
Three mills.
No.
Mr. Kachasik?
Yes.
Dr. Koschow?
No.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Matarazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Nemec?
Yes.
Mr. Petrucci?
Yes.
Mr. Stovall?
No.
Two, three, four, five. I have five yes and one four no. Right, did I count that?
You did.
Okay, motion carries.
Motion carries.
I was just, not to call out anybody, it's not my purpose. I really hope that the four dissenting members will be a critical part in the discussion of what actually is going to be cut next, because it's, our decisions are going to have to be made affecting overall scores and everything else inside the building. So please be open next week on, or in June, on, on what actually is going to be cut.
I'd be glad to participate in any of those discussions.
All right, thank you. And then next week, under a budget of finance, we're also going to ask you to designate a treasurer, approve the CWCTC budget. Under buildings and grounds and safety, there will be no items. Under employee relations, negotiations, transportation, there are no items as of now, but we are still waiting to hear back from the SEIU who was voting on their contract. So we might have a contract by next week. We might, we may not. Food service, will be no items to approve. Under personnel and curriculum, we're going to ask you to approve the personnel agenda. Authorize administration to issue reasonable assurance of employment notice, approve textbooks, approve early graduation. Under approved, we're going to ask you to approve terms of employment and approve settlement agreements. Under policy, public relations, legislative title two, we're going to ask you to approve the list of graduates of the class of two thousand twenty-five. I will have the number by next week. I'm sorry, I don't have it right now. And we're going to ask you, under taxes, insurance, census, there are no items to report. Now, I do, for the reasonable assurance letter, is that something that we might have to hold off on to depending on the June? Is that correct, Brett?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's correct.
Because I don't want to give someone a reasonable assurance letter if the board decides to not raise the mills.
Yep.